The May 6th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Prior to the start of our city council meetings, the council has an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address us on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Typically, our meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium portion of the meeting is 6:30 to 6:55 in these council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and address and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, we will allow people to spontaneously get up and address the council as we did tonight. This portion of the meeting is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about open podium, again, contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412. The first item on the agenda tonight is the Human Rights Award, and I have a member of our staff, Patricia Fenrick, who is going to come up to present those awards.
Wonderful. Good evening. Thank you very much. I am the staff liaison for the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, which acts in an advisory capacity for the council, and we've been very, very busy this year focusing on events of raising awareness. I'd like to introduce Sandra Filardo, invite her to come up to do the first presentation of the award. Sandra is the Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission.
Good evening. Hi. I'm Sandra Filardo. I'm the Chair of the Commission, Human Rights and Diversity, and I'm pleased to call Linnea West. We are going to present her today with the individual award for human rights. Move West. Linnea has been a wonderful member of our community. She's an educator in Eden Prairie as well as a parent in Eden Prairie. I've had the privilege to know her for many years. She's dedicated her career and devoted it to closing the gap, education gap, for minority children and children of different backgrounds. And outside of the school, she ensures that everybody feels welcomed and educates people about how important it is that we all are treated equal and have the same opportunities in our community. So I congratulate her on receiving this award.
Could I ask the two of you to stay up so we can do a picture at the end? If you want to just come off to the side? Thank you.
I'd like to invite next Chase Carlson to come up to the podium to do our next award.
Well, I'm Chase Carlson from the Commission, and today I'd like to call up Dan O'Brien up to the stage to receive his award. So DSO Architecture is being recognized today for their donation of time and talent to the prop shop in order for them to build in addition to their building in Eden Prairie. So Dan O'Brien designed the space and also provided free support to the general contractor in order to guide the project. For the service of Dan O'Brien and the DSO exemplifies the Eden Prairie Manifesto in that it helps to promote an atmosphere of acceptance and caring for others in the city, rather, by supporting the role of the prop shop and what they do in the community to assist families that are in need of help. So with that being said, I'd like everyone to join me in welcoming and thanking Dan O'Brien for receiving this award today.
I'd like to invite Connie Iacavelli to the podium to present our next award.
Hello, my name is Connie Iacavelli. I am here to present the Human Rights Award for the nonprofit organization this year. The award this year is going to Barrow Tutoring, and I would like to invite Linda Bergman up to receive on behalf of Barrow. I would also like to ask that the other tutors stand and be recognized while the award is being presented. Thank you. Barrow is the Somali word for learn. Barrow Tutoring is a collaboration of adult and teenage volunteers who meet at the Eden Prairie Library every Tuesday and Thursday evening during the school year to offer homework help, conversational English, and citizenship classes to help both students and adults. The tutors are from Wooddale and City Hill Church as well as the broader community. Barrow Tutoring upholds the Eden Prairie Manifesto and works against intolerance by encouraging contact and building friendships between neighbors of different cultural groups. The presence of Barrow tutors and the 20 to 30 Somali students with whom they work in the Eden Prairie Library is a visible witness to this community's commitment to promote a multicultural community that emphasizes care and respect for others. So, thank you Linda Bergman for accepting this award on behalf of Barrow Tutoring.
And finally, I'd like to invite Karina Lynn up to the front to do our final award. Karina is our second student commissioner.
Hi, I will be presenting the Youth Award for Human Rights. I would like to invite Camilla Marino to receive her award. Camilla was nominated by her peers to receive the Youth Human Rights Award. She is very involved in activities that promote the acceptance of people from diverse backgrounds and helps to create an accepting atmosphere at the high school. She volunteers with children who have physical and educational disabilities and is very vocal about the importance of acceptance for every person. Her dream is to pursue a career in psychology so that she can help those who have mental conditions. Camilla upholds the Eden Prairie Manifesto through her commitment to creating a community that respects diversity and emphasizes the importance of respect and caring for others. Thank you.
As long as I'm down here, I'm going to do the next portion of the meeting from down here. The next item that we have up is a proclamation regarding Senior Awareness Week, and we have a group of seniors here that I'll call up if you would like to come on up. And I'll begin reading the proclamation while they come up. Whereas the increasing number of senior citizens in Eden Prairie bring many opportunities and challenges for all components of our city, families, businesses, and government, and whereas every segment of our society is influenced by the needs, resources, and expertise of our senior citizens, and awareness improves participation and action, and whereas our Eden Prairie seniors play a pivotal role in formal and informal education, sharing years of accumulated experience and wisdom which will impact our future, and whereas the community wishes to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and accomplishments of the seniors in our community and recognize the organizations that serve older adults, and whereas Senior Awareness Month recognizes that seniors are an integral part of our community, now therefore, the Eden Prairie City Council does proclaim May 2014 to be Senior Awareness Month. Thank you very much. Do you want to say a few words?
On behalf of the Senior Advisory Council, we certainly want to extend our thanks to the council and to the city of Eden Prairie for all the support that you give the seniors. As y'all are probably aware, we're the largest growing population in Eden Prairie, and we thank you for your support and your continued cooperation with us. Thank you.
Move Approval.
Second. Any items to pull? Any additions, Mr. Getchell?
No, there is not, Mayor.
Okay. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held Tuesday, April 22nd?
Move Approval.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I need to abstain.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held the same evening Tuesday, April 22nd?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendar. Is there a motion for approval?
Move Approval.
Second.
Anything to pull for discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
The motion passes. Brings us to our first public hearing, which is approval of a first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 1151, Standards for Protections of Wetlands. Mr. Getchell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. This ordinance comes about due to an audit that was conducted by the State Board of Water and Soil Resources, and they, there are several revisions to our code which would bring it up to date with state law based on their audit, and you could see that through the packet and some of the bullet items that a lot of it has to do with definitions and processes that are actually somewhat simplified related to city engineer and environmental coordinator approval and appeals process and a wetland determination process. So our, the majority of the ordinance is very much intact. There are just some minor housekeeping changes related to what the Board of Soil and Water Resources would ask that we do to bring the, our city code up to state standards, and we certainly can answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Getchell? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on these standards for wetland protection? Okay. I've seen no one. Is there a motion?
Move to close the public hearing and approve first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 11.51, Standards for Protection of Wetlands.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next two items in our public hearing all, both relate to a possible aquatic project. And Mr. Getchell, can you refresh my memory on how we were going to do this? Where did you want the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. So first, we have a presentation from staff on the entire pool project, and then B, item B, is the actual public hearing item, and that's related to the potential bonding. So after the presentation, you could open the public hearing under B, and then following questions, testimony, council discussion, then the proposed action is B, and then it would be C related to the actual bids.
Okay.
So with that, I can turn it over to Mr. Lothammer.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff. I just want to take a minute to say thank you to the people that are here tonight. Many of them, we all recognize from their participation in our community. Many of them you may not have seen before, but they've taken the time to written an email and expressed their thoughts and opinions to you, and many that I see are people that we spent quite a bit of time with, sitting in rooms, doing, having a workshop, and trying to figure out what would be the best plan to bring this forward. So just want to say thank you to those who have taken even more time tonight to come out and possibly tell you a little bit more about what they think about the project, too. I also want to recognize that tonight we have members from our finance staff, our financial consultant. We also have the people that you're going to know with this project from our staff on the Parks and Recreation side, Beth Witt and Wendy Sevenick, along with our lead architect, Victor Pachati from HGA, and Brian Recker from RJM Construction. So certainly, there's ability to answer questions very well for you, I believe. So just to walk you through what I'll do for you tonight is preview the council action items, and I just want to get that fresh in your mind so that when you're thinking about the presentation, you understand what we're going to be asking you to consider and think about tonight. We're also going to review the design process and schematics, and I know we've done that with you quite a few times, but there may be some people watching at home or in the audience that we want to help them refresh on what we're proposing that we would, we would actually build, and so I'll walk through those as well. Also, what's important to know about is what the debt might be in order to build this as well as the operating forecast. We've shown you that previously. We have some updated numbers and projections as time has gone along and as the design has gone along, so we'll share that with you and certainly be able to answer any questions. We then recently went out for bids. You know, a lot of the design processes, we've been going through it with you and updating, has all been to be able to determine what would it cost to do this, and we now really know. We have bids in our hands that we can act on if the council does choose to do so. We'll overview the funding methods. Last council meeting, we did have our financial consultants here to talk to you about the methods that could be used for funding a project like this. And then I'll tell you about our Parks Commission recommendation. We were able to do a very similar presentation with them last night and had some great discussion, and I'll let you know the, kind of the wishes and also some of the input that they had for us that they wanted you to hear tonight. And then, at that point, we can conduct the public hearing, we can come back, answer any questions, and then you can certainly act on the motions at that stage, too. So, again, after the public hearing, there would be the consideration of a motion that's very tied to the public hearing of what type of bonding and the authority to issue those bonds. The next two action items that you see is to award the bids if you so elect to, as well as we have some recommendations of base bids plus some alternates that we would suggest that we include, and we'll go through those in the presentation so I can show you what they are and show you what the cost and the value of those are as well. Then, as you recall, our method of building for this would be what we're proposing is a construction management form of building, and what that does, just like the last time we did the upgrade to the community center, the actual, once the bids are awarded, they would then be assigned over to RJM Construction, and similar to like how a general contractor would keep track of the subs and the quality of the work and work with the subcontractors, that's what RJM would be doing on our behalf in a construction manager form of management. So there's actually two pieces to that. One golden rod sheet that I did hand out to you, there's a slight change in a couple of the names of the contractors, so that's the assignment of contractors that lists the names and the addresses of the contractors. Just going back a little bit in history with this project, we go back almost two years to the feasibility study. Also, when you think about aquatics and pools in Eden Prairie, for those of you who've been on the council and just in the community for a while, this goes back quite a ways. There have been some concepts over the years that didn't come to fruition, obviously. Obviously, in the 80s, the pool was built, but as 15 or so years ago, it was anticipated that it was no longer meeting code, no longer meeting the needs, and there had been a growing population and more demand for aquatics in the community. You started to see some proposals coming forward. One of them was a, more of an outdoor water park, lazy river style to it, and that just didn't seem to fit at the time and didn't move forward. There was also the concept of what if we dug out the current pool and made it a little bit deeper and put in a zero depth? What would that be like? And that one didn't move forward as well. I think what I would say to you is, based on where we sit today and how we looked at this process of looking at it for the next 30 or 40 years, we've been able to get that out of the last pool. Hopefully, a design that would move forward would be something that would be in place for the next 30 or 40 years. And that was really one of our guiding principles as we looked at how do we put a design together that benefits the entire community. And when you look at the designs, as we've shown you before, having multiple bodies of water and flexible types of spaces, I really predict that 30 or 40 years from now, we won't be in a same situation. We have that flexibility that wasn't built into one body of water. In addition, we have many more different types of user groups that would take advantage of this type of expansion as well. So our timeline, you've all been through it with us over the last two years of doing design, coming back to the council, coming back to our Parks Commission, working closely with the user groups, getting their impact and input and feedback, and reflecting that into the design. And I think what you see tonight, the end result of those designs, is really reflective of a wide variety of community input, not just for one user group, but for many people that are currently using and many people that would like to, but we just don't have what they would like to use at this point. This just shows you a little more of the more recent history. Went out for bids, the documents were completed at the end of March, and we spent about an hour opening bids on the 29th of this month. There was that much interest and that many bids to be opened and read off, so we feel good about where we sit with the bids for the project. The response to stakeholder interests, I just wanted to review again, and these are things that we learned along the way, and they were also things that over the years our staff has heard from people, kind of, "It sure would be nice," or "It is a challenge," or "I wish," or some of those general comments that we already knew about, but, so you can see some of the things that I think made this even a stronger and better design based on having user and also community and public input to it. These are all things that I think would enhance the project, and they were included in the project design. Another principle that we looked at as we started with the design is our energy efficiency and energy conservation, and you're seeing these reflected in the designs. They don't necessarily stand out as things that you would see walking through. A lot of them are certainly behind the scenes, but they're things that we made sure we could, at a reasonable cost, add into the facility. Some of them have great paybacks very quickly because of the energy savings that they represent. This is the latest rendition and look of the building, and so you'll see this. This is as if you're coming, heading towards the school, heading west on Valley View, and look to the north and see the corner of the building. This is another shot of that, getting you a little bit more facing around to what would be the front door of the aquatics entrance. This is the aquatics entrance, almost as if you were standing over at the Round Lake Baseball Stadium and looking straight across. This is the look coming back from Valley View if you were heading east, so if you're coming out of the school and heading east, it's the look to the side. This is a look as if you were standing over by the school and looking, and one of the reasons I want to point this out to you is it can be a little hard, we should have maybe made the fluorescent orange, but one of the things we'll be talking about a little bit later tonight in more, more depth is certainly the water slide addition, and I wanted to point that out, that if you're coming from the school side on Valley View, heading east, this is what you would see. You would see these large windows, a couple stories high, with the water slide in the, in the background. And the reason that I show you that and tell you about that now is because one of the things that our Parks Commission suggested as the importance of the water slide is just that view and that look, and as people are driving by and can see it, and you can hear the kids in the car saying, "I want to go there," or "I want to go back there," or "Remember when we were there." It's really a signature look of the building that communicates what's inside, and so as I talk to you more about the Parks Commission recommendation, one of the things I want to go back to is just the look and feel of that, of that water slide. As we go more to the site and how the building and facility lays out on the site, you can see where some of the trees and plantings are and how it fits and orientates, so show you just a little bit closer. Here's where the gym is currently, the roundabout drop-off of the front entrance, and then down here, the entrance into the aquatics addition. So we go a little deeper into the, into the building, just to remind you, as you come into the aquatics area, you come in to this hallway, and this area right here in the next slide that I show you is where there's the opportunity to build on top in a very cost-effective way to add to the fitness facility. If you come in and you take a left, there's a meeting room. You can imagine people there for just community meetings. You could imagine teams having a coaching session in there. You could also see that on the weekends if there's a large meet going on, that that's a great place to administer and do the check-in of the meet, kind of a meet headquarters. Here are some restrooms. This is a dry land training area. I know we've shown you a few photos where you've seen pictures of the kids training in the hallways, kind of side by side, and trying to do some of that training work that is outside of the water. This has an opportunity to be, you know, very advantageous, not just to swimmers, but to other athletes that might be training in the facility. As you move into the, down into the hallway, there's a concession area. This area right here, kind of like to characterize if you're sitting at a caribou on the, on the high chairs with the counter looking into the pool area, so maybe parents that are maybe plugging in their laptops and doing some work but want to see what's happening in the, in the practices or the meets or the workout, have the capability to do that. Down here, we've got a couple wet locker rooms. We think that's really important to take a lot of pressure off of the current locker rooms that we have and really have that wet environment where you basically put 30 to 40 or 50 team members in all at once. That can be overwhelming to the locker rooms that we have now and the people that are just there for kind of the fitness piece. The two pools that you're seeing, and again, this is a phase one, this is a great competitive pool. Eight lanes, has a depth of a little over seven feet, goes up to a little over three feet, very cold water pool. It's where you will see competitive swimmers training. The meets would take place at. You would also see some of the fitness swimmers that want to train at the pool at, you know, now they're swimming in water that might be too warm for their comfort. So this is highly competitive. You see bleachers here of, that will fit about 300 people. You also, in this pool here, you see a 12-foot depth, going up to about that three and a half foot again, and what this is, is a pool that can also be used for training. Could be eight lanes. You'd see lap swimming going on in all of them. Allows for a lot of opportunities for open lap swim. So people that are just coming there and want to get a workout in will have the ability to do that. There's very little bit of that time right now because of all of the scheduled use of the pool for practices and training and meets, so that's a great benefit to having these separate bodies of water, as well as maybe just a slightly warmer bit of temperature that's more conducive towards the diving. You see a couple diving boards at the end. This is a very flexible pool. You might see synchronized swimming. You might see water polo happening. You will see some of our swim lessons, mainly in the more shallow end to that, at peak times of the night where some of the older kids would be able to take swimming lessons. When you head down here, this is all the pool mechanical where you run the plant from. This is a couple restrooms, aquatic office with good visibility into both areas. We're starting to get into that, what would be second phase of the project, and you see over in here where we have the zero-depth entry, this is really where the start of our current pool is right now, and that pool kind of sits about in this, this footprint or this area right now. There is a meeting room, training room. You might see birthday parties going on in there, basic community meetings. We've got some areas for our aquatic staff that teaches a lot of the classes. Outside of the pool environment, great place for parents to sit and not be in that, maybe warmer, more humid environment if they want the comfort. A little expansion of the family locker room area, and then also the drop down here to the hot tub, which was one of the, the big inputs from some of the users as we asked for that, both electronically and also at one of our open houses that we had. So we've got the hot tub in, and then this yellow shaded area is the water slide area, and I'll get to that a little more as we talk about it as one of the alternate, alternates to be considered, but this, as we put it in as an alternate, this as a box can either be there or it could not be built, and we know the price to be able to do that. So I'll tell you a little bit more about that as we get to the alternates. I want to take you up to the second floor of the addition, and remember, underneath this is where you walked into the hallway. We have an elevator, which we think is crucial for both safety and accessibility, to be able to get up to the second floor where all the fitness area is. What we're depending on is that we're going to be able to get up to the second floor What we're depicting in yellow is by doing this build over the top and expansion, we net out that many more treadmills and ellipticals and other types of machines. The reason that we don't get even more is because we're also expanding and adding two fitness studios. We were at the community center last night with the Parks Commission, and at about 7:15 to 7:30, we took a tour of the whole community center prior to talking about this project, so they got a feel for what things looked like. There wasn't a space that wasn't being used, including some hallway space, including most of the treadmills. And I think last night was probably one of our nicer nights of the year. You would have expected that, it might have been slow, but classes were packed with people. It was really a fun night to be there and see it. And, you know, when we've talked about this, it isn't a build it and hope they come. We already know there's lines waiting, whether that's lines to get into aquatics classes, whether that's pool rental time, that some of our user groups are already saying to us, "We'd like more," and they've been saying that to us for the last four or five years. So for us, making the leap, will it be well-used, is not a very big leap to make. And I'll also show you a slide and a graph, I think that even better depicts that, of when we opened the last time in a renovative state and how it became well-used. So a little bit nicer renderings and pictures from the inside, now that you're oriented a little bit more. This is what it would look like if you were in the bleachers or the area looking towards the high school. So you, these windows along the side here look out towards Valley View. This is the eight-lane, highly competitive pool. Here is the eight lane with the two water slides. These windows right here, right now, if you're in our community center, you would be looking out over grass and out to Round Lake. Now you'd be overlooking the pools and out onto Valley View Road. This entrance right here is actually the entrance that goes in between phase one and phase two. And so in the next slide, I'll show you. And the other thing I should point out before I move on, here's a climbing wall that I'll show you as one of the alternates, but that would go near the 12-foot depth area. The zero-depth pool, and this isn't exactly how we would arrange some of the play features that are in there. They would be more off to the right side so that there was a little more ease of entrance and moving into the bigger part of that pool. But it depicts, you know, what some of the play features would be, that some of the younger kids would certainly want to enjoy and play with. You can also see where the water slide is at and how that gets shown kind of off to the side of this facility. And then towards the back where these windows are, that's where you'll also see the hot tub. So a lot of really good natural light that's able to come in and really light the environment well. So we've gone through some of the revenue and expenditure forecasts with you in the past. At that point, they were based on a hypothetical phase one, then a hypothetical phase one and two when it opens. Now that we've gone a little further along in design and we're able to look at exact timelines of when phase one would open and phase two would open, we were able to put some, I think, more accurate and timely estimates to this. You'll also notice that we start on the left-hand column with our actuals as 2013. That was a year that we certainly know what happened, and you can see how we, in some cases, built off that. There are really only though, some major revenue drivers that get impacted by this type of an addition. One of them is membership, and membership is a little more than 30% of our revenue coming out of the community center. And so you'll see how that does trend up over the years. And the reason for that is this type of amenity is going to attract more people to want to be members. It's going to attract some people that are currently our members to go from a single or a duo membership and say, "Now this is a place I'd want to bring my family." And they might upgrade to a family membership at that point. We also, as you look at every year with us, we look at prices, and typically, we've raised our membership prices 2% to 3% a year. That's built into these projections as well. So it relies on some price increases, and it also relies on some volume increases and some changes in types of revenue. That's how you're going to see that. Obviously, when we get into the pool side of things, the direct pool side, you're going to see increase in revenue from lessons, more kids able to take lessons. Again, we have waiting lists, so it's not the case of we'll have to do even more marketing. It's the case of now people can have better access and get into some of those classes that they've been wanting to. You're also going to see more rental time. We rent by the lane when we rent to the high school or the Fox Jets or other groups. We'll have more lanes and more capability to rent time and really feel like we can now meet that demand that they have for practice time. Also, there's a potential for more meets, weekend meets, that might not have been there in the past because we can't even hold a meet with starting blocks. So now we would have that capability and we would anticipate some more revenue coming through that. You'll see our line of birthday party revenue. People, I think, we already have quite a few birthday parties that are associated with skating parties, swimming parties, art parties. And I think when you see these amenities, you would see more birthday parties that are associated, especially with aquatics. And we also have more rooms, meeting rooms that could handle that. So that's an area that you're seeing trending up quite a bit. A little bit of trend up in concessions as well, just more people coming in and out. Those weekend meets generate concessions and vending sales, so you'll see that as a revenue driver. Everything else that you see the line items on, it's really what we would usually expect with a couple percent or 3% increase as the years go by. So that moves us on to our forecasts and our goals for the expenses. And those are really driven by those same areas of revenue. And so when you think about adding on more space, and when you look at that top line of our administration, that's where all of our utilities and energy costs get placed into. And that's a big number in a facility that has three sheets of ice and pools and just a lot of space. And so you see that go up. You'll also see some more of our wages go up on the aquatic side. We'll be having more guarding opportunities. We would also have more swim lesson instructors, so you see some of those wages associated with it, as well as some more coordination time of staff to be able to operate and schedule a larger facility. See a little bit more on the concession side too, but they really match and mirror some of the revenue that's in place. This slide, I think, is one that I want to spend a little bit of time on because it really takes you through the recent history of the upgrades of the facility. If you go back to 2005, this is before anything happened in recent renovation. It's really the facility that was there since the early 80s. You're seeing weight rooms that are now tucked into a racquetball court. You see two sheets of ice and you see an aging pool. It really isn't a fitness facility or a place that's really that desirable to have a membership at. And so that's what you see from a revenue and expense difference. You see more expenses than you do revenue. And when you think about it, that's really similar to what a lot of cities' community centers currently perform as. Community centers aren't necessarily looked at or philosophically felt by a lot of councils and cities as if they should be a more revenue than expense to it. When you think about why not, we don't have salons, we don't have towel service, we don't have massage. In those areas that you might see at a private fitness company, for us, they're public meeting areas. That's where our townhouse associations and our athletic associations and our youth art classes are able to meet. So we're not, that's not a revenue or a profit-driven part of our operation. Where people have now come to us and said, "I'll pay $30 or $80 to be a member," that's really associated with, more so with our fitness area. And that didn't happen to us until the last renovation. Certainly, they have good access to open skating and open swimming, but we still don't have the towel service. We don't have the sauna. We don't have some of what you would think are upper-end health clubs. What we find, though, is that a lot of people really like that. They feel that's a comfortable place for them to be. So comfortable that we do about 144 different fitness classes every week. And some of those are specific to seniors who are here tonight using insurance reimbursement programs like the Silver Sneakers program. And so they pay nothing, we get reimbursed by the insurance company for it. But it's certainly not something that is a large profit center or a large revenue maker. So looking at that graph and that chart, what you'll see is what happened when we reopened in 2008. It gets very popular. People start to buy a lot of memberships from us. And we end up to date where we have over 2,600 memberships, which equates to over 6,000 people that are members there. But that's only, when I think about our community center, I think of that as really only about a third of what happens there. We have a lot of other classes, a lot of other meetings, a lot of ice rented, a lot of swimming, a lot of open basketball, and it really is a great balance and feel of a community center. The good news is, it's one of the best areas of cost recovery that we have in our parks and recreation system. When you put this on the continuum and put it into perspective, think about when we just built two fields at Flying Cloud for soccer and lacrosse. We don't rent those, we allow the groups to use them. We rent them every once in a while if it's an outside tournament that's being charged for. We get a rental fee for that. But otherwise, we provide that facility, as well as many other softball, baseball fields. We provide those at virtually no cost for the entire community. And so that's important to think about too, is how do we make sure that we provide something for a lot of interests? We have a lot of tennis courts. We have a lot of baseball, softball, a lot of play areas. This is an amenity that it does have an opportunity to recover a lot of the costs that go with it, based on it being an amenity that people are willing to pay for, for some of it. So what you see here too, is in 2011 and 2012, we get really close to revenues and expenditures matching. And to be fully transparent on that, we don't add in depreciation. This is a part of our general fund. If this was an enterprise fund or some other type of city fund, we would add depreciation into that, but it's not. When we look at this, we look at only operating revenue and expenses. And we budget some of our other facility upgrades in our capital improvement program that you see on an annual basis as well. So you say, was 2013 a bad operating year because the revenue and expenses got just a little farther apart? The reality there is, we had to rink down. We took that rink down and made it from an Olympic-sized sheet of ice down to a NHL-sized sheet of ice, and were able to reach some other energy efficiencies that we'll realize in the future, but less ice time. It was also a year that we reinvested our heaviest in some of the equipment that is being heavily used upstairs in the fitness area. So that's one dynamic that happened this year. When I tell you about what I think could happen in 2020 or 2025, those are some things that are out there that we should know about and plan for. But one of the things that we think will happen is, when we add this amenity, just like when we added the last amenity and upgraded and refreshed the community center, we think when adding this type of amenity and the revenue projections and the expense projections that we just showed you, we believe that we can get very close to those lines matching and in some cases, have even more revenue than expenses. That's all going to be a part of what we consider as we stand before each other on an annual basis and talking about price increases. I will tell you that a wild card and a variable that I think we all see from year to year are some of those utility costs. Our hope is we don't see some of those 20 and 30%, because in this scenario, as we build on, we go from about $800,000 a year in utility costs to a little over $1 million a year. So that utility cost can be a big driver and a big percentage of what we do going forward. The good news is for us, as you know, with 2014-15 program, we've already taken a lot of steps within our ice sheets to become as energy efficient and as effective as possible. When you think about replacing an older aquatics facility of 30 years with newer, even though it's a larger footprint, more water to be able to work with, we'll have more efficient systems to be able to keep the energy costs as low as we possibly can. So really, what would happen if this moved forward in terms of timing? We would start construction on phase one in June. We believe that April of next year, March or April of next year, we could be ready to open phase one, which includes the two eight-lane pools. And at that point, that's when we would be able to take down our current body of water, so we always have water up, and start on the phase two to put in the zero-depth portion of the project. We believe that that's about a nine-month to a year's scenario to get that up and going. And so really, we get up and going around that 2016, early on in 2016, we kind of get our full legs and get our good marketing program and people discovering the new facility. The upgrade to the facility would happen in '27 and '18, we think would be one of the better operating years that we would be able to have. Again, I would say going forward, I believe that based on the projections we've run, there's years that there would be an opportunity to have increased revenue compared to expenses, but there's going to be some years where we have to reinvest back in the facility. And it might mean that those years look a little more like what happened in 2013, where the revenue stayed kind of in that flattening, but the expenses had to go up in order for us to have a good quality facility. So I think this chart can really give good thoughts and projections, and it does show the history of why we think it's possible that down the road, if this is accepted and seen like the last renovation was, that it has a very good chance to be even more, you know, financially revenue to expense ratio than previously. So want to jump to, so that would be how we would operate it. Jump to what would happen and how much would it cost for us to actually build it. And again, we opened the bids and the bids have been processed over the last week, and all but a couple of them are well nailed down and ready to go. There's a couple areas that we want to add some quotes to. We want to rebid one of the categories on steel erection, but what you'll see in here is we have an allowance for that. And so when we get to the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, and that's spelled out how to get to that in our agreement with RJM, you will see that this same worksheet is used to basically be the budget which arrives at a guaranteed maximum price, just like we did the last time going through the community center building process. So that's an allowance when we built our houses, you know, you might have a painting allowance or a fixtures allowance from the builder. We feel strongly, and RJM feels very strongly, that we should be able to do it for about that dollar amount for the steel. And there is some contingency in the number two that you'll see. That is a protection in case that it does come back a little bit higher in that bid category. What you will see on this list are construction costs, and each one of these had a bid category that we opened, and these are the lowest responsible bids. I'll tell you that in some cases, not all contractors filled in the blanks. We had some contractors, and it's, these are literally fill-in-the-blank forms, they didn't fill in all the blanks. And so there are some contractors that we couldn't even consider their bid. That happens on projects. Hopefully, it's only a couple percentage of those contractors that are out there, but when we had this many bids, it was bound to be the case where one or two didn't go through or prove it well enough to make it a valid bid. So you see all of these areas, and one of the larger ones is the aquatics. There's a decent amount of things wrapped in there, but that's essentially the contractor that comes in and builds the pool. But then also things like timing equipment and some of the pool accessories are a part of that company's scope of work as well. We're still on what's the contractors' categories. It takes you down to 16.7 million. That also includes all of the construction administration things that need to happen that RJM takes care of, the trailer on-site, all of the office equipment, the people on-site to be able to supervise it. So you get a subtotal of the construction costs at 16,778. As a part of that, there's some alternates that are already included in that, and when we review the alternates, I'll point out which ones those are. So they're already included in that price. We also have the contingency of about $1.5 million, which is fairly standard for this size of a project, contractor's fee, and then the total project estimate at the 17,756. That's not everything. And when I jump to this next page, we call them owner costs. Those are things that we need to pay for the SAC charges. We also need to be able to open the building and operate it with things like door locks, card access, security system, furniture. And so you'll see all of those categories that we call them owner costs, and they come to about $673,000. There's also design fees. The design fees of the 1.1 million, about a little over 800,000 of those have already been paid. The greatest part of design fees is done before you go out to construction, and you've seen those contracts come before you. To go through construction administration with the architects to make sure that this is built to plan and done well, it's, their fee going forward is slightly under $300,000 to do that. So that's included in here, as well as the pass costs. RJM's cost that we paid them to do the RJM's cost that we paid them to do the cost estimating, that's also in here as well. Their costs going forward are also in here. And so you see that total project cost coming to $19,636. That's everything with the exception of the water slide, and we'll jump to what those alternates are, and I'll show you how the other alternates that we're suggesting already go in there, what those costs and values are. So you see the water slide, and I wish I could figure out something else to call it, because the slide itself is not $1.3 million. This is that housing in that whole building, that two-story, the glass, the HVAC that goes with it, it is that slide as well, but that's a small portion of it. It's also, at the bottom, there's a plunge pool, it's called, that when you come off the slide, you go into the plunge pool. It's the mechanical that gets tied to that to run that plunge pool. And so it is really a large box with a water slide and a plunge pool inside of it. And so as we had discussions last night with the Parks Commission, and they were trying to come up with, what is the value and would they recommend to the council that we should think about doing it? A couple things came up. One that I showed you before is, it's a significant feel and attraction to this entire project. It's something that makes people, especially families with younger kids, want to keep coming back. It's something that's memorable for them, and it's really a signature piece that would be a part of that section of the facility. The other part of it is, at that plunge pool, imagine it's the school day, and all of these six-to-12-year-olds that would usually want to go down a water slide aren't there. It's a small body of water that's relatively inexpensive then for us to have as a warm body of water. So at 10:00 in the morning, you could see a group of six or seven water aerobics participants that want more of a warm water feel. You could see toddlers in there having more of a private swim lesson or a parent-taught swim lesson in a really comfortable environment. You might see some of our visitors that come with MS or other joint issues that would use that pool for therapy. And so we're really not just talking about that orange slide that you see that goes in a circle, it's really more than that. And when we try to think about, as we tried to dissect, so what are the, what's the revenue benefit of having that? It's a little bit intangible to be able to say, we could take in $20,000 more or $30,000 more because of that. Or on what is the expense? Certainly, we can look at the square footage and place some estimates towards what does it cost to heat and cool that. Right now, in our estimates of revenue and expenditure, we came up with that, assuming that a water slide was in there. But I will tell you that our estimates are fairly conservative as well. So when we really think about, should we or shouldn't we, when we get to the Parks Commission recommendation, the recommendation that they specifically wanted to tag on to the end of their overall recommendation is, they highly recommend to do the water slide for two specific reasons. One, for what it does to the kids and the family and the benefit that it provides them. But two, they talked a lot about the cost of being able to do it now and the efficiencies of that cost. This isn't something that two years from now after, or four years from now, you would come back and say, you could build it for $1.3 million. The prices that are here from the contractors are based on them already being onsite and doing all of the other HVAC work, all of the other electrical work, all of the other concrete work. And so if we sent all those trades home, built Phase 1 and 2 without the water slide, and said, let's do it five years from now, at that point, it certainly isn't $1.3 million. And that's not just with the general escalation that could happen out there with inflation. There's mobilization costs, and there's just not the efficiency. So you're looking at a much higher cost to be able to do that. This cost, we think, for what would be done, is a reasonable cost, and we think it is a great benefit to the overall project and the flexibility of the overall aquatics area. So tell you, this is a general overview of the alternates, and then we'll go one by one, and in some cases, I can show you pictures and the difference in those pictures. The ones that have double asterisks by it are the ones that we are highly recommending and have already included in those building prices that we've showed you. The diving board, the climbing wall, the LED fixtures, the aquatic play feature, and the pool handling air unit. So here again, the water slide, again, the building, the pool systems, the foundation, and so we could hear later, we proposed a million-dollar slide. The slide is not $1 million. The building envelope, the slide, the plunge pool, the deck area around it that has tables and openness to it, that's what would be a $1.3 million add. In the base bid, we had the standard style of diving boards, the ones, sometimes you see these with aluminum feet to them that, you know, directly connect to the deck. We had heard from the diving team, the swim coaches, it sure would be nice and a better quality product if we went with the next style that you see, which is more of a concrete base with tile covering it. It's more stable. From our perspective as a facility owner, it's easier to maintain, you take out of some of the rust and the interaction with the foundation out of play, and it's just a nicer aesthetically-looking product. This is $9,000 in addition for both, so about $4,500 apiece to upgrade. We felt that that was a good value, and when you think about this as concrete and tile and 30-plus years of use and good quality look to it, we think it's a valuable thing to do. This, we had kicked around, did we put it in the base bid or the alternate, or where should we put it? But this is something we wanted, so it can be flexible, because it certainly is something that bolts onto the side of the pool, but this would be in that area of the 12-foot depth of one of the lap pools. We see this as a critical component for teen entertainment. If you want, if you're in junior high or middle school and you want to come with your friends and have an open swim, a good time at the pool, this is also something in addition to the diving boards that we think those, you know, 12-to-14, 15, 16-year-olds would really enjoy. So we've recommended that being added as an alternate. This is that shallow depth area where originally I showed you a different schematic, but this is a design we've worked with a vendor on where the spray areas are and also a little spray mushroom. You see a lot of the really young kids that are sitting in these areas and playing in the water. The piece that we put in as an alternate is this piece right here, and it corresponds with this. This has a lot of different features, including the smaller slide, a climbing piece to it, and dump buckets and water wheels, and, you know, for what you get, you get a lot of components with it, and we think that it would really enhance that experience and be a good attraction, especially for those really young kids that only want to go in up to their knees but want to interact and get used to the water. Two other alternatives that we said we don't think we should recommend taking. One is a waterproofing under the ceramic tile, and in talking to some of the contractors, we feel comfortable that we have with our tile and with some of our ceiling, of some of the structural steel underneath, we feel that we're well-protected into the future and feel that this is an upgrade that we would not need to include. Also, the ductwork, which there's quite a bit of, in both cases, we had painted galvanized or painted aluminum ductwork. We wanted to see what the difference was in price. We wouldn't recommend jumping up to the aluminum painted ductwork. We think the galvanized will hold the paint just as well, and what you see will be whatever color we choose to put on it. You won't even tell if it's aluminum or galvanized. So we can save that $50,000 towards the project and go with the galvanized type of material. The base and the alternate here for the LED light fixtures. What we asked is, give us a couple looks, and we worked with, HGA has their own lighting consultant that we were able to work with, and we had a base amount of LED lighting, but then we said, what if we took that even further? And a couple key points to that and why, working with our facilities division, we feel that this is a really good value. Obviously, there's an energy payoff over time. We believe that that's reasonable and can be achieved in under 10 years by going even further with the LED lighting. We also think from a responsibility and environmental stewardship, we would recommend this, and also from the time it takes to change some of these light bulbs and the frequency of the light bulbs, and some of the areas, when you think of these big pool ceiling areas and difficult places to reach lights, we really hope that they don't go out very often, and going with an LED product is certainly a way to ensure that lifespan. So we would recommend adding this to the project. We think it pays off really quickly and is a real benefit to the project. We looked at two different air handling systems. There are two big systems up on the roof, and our first, in the base, we actually liked the one that was the alternative better. Some of it's because of size, some of it's because of the way it's manufactured. We would actually realize a savings of about $92,000 if we took the alternate, which is the one that we would recommend and prefer to move forward with. It's about 70% efficiency. It also has a unit that has some heating and cooling capability to it, and so we really believe that this is the better way to move forward. We have in here, you'll see, a unit price. If we go over the amount of excavation, maybe we find some soil that's not as stable as we would like. This is just a guaranteed, agreed-upon upfront cost that we would pay if we had to have extra soil removed, so that's why you see that. So I'm going to move quickly through the finance options, because you've seen that as recently as two weeks ago. You saw our finance consultant present to you financing options, really in these four categories, and they did a nice job, too, of showing it to you in this grid and this chart. And after that meeting, we walked away with council direction to look harder at the tax abatement bonds. And so we did that, and we've gone through the public notice that it takes to be able to potentially move forward. Also, one of the things that it takes to move forward of those is have a public hearing. And so that public hearing is scheduled here for tonight and about to happen, and, you know, we also understand that it was the council's desire, in addition to that public hearing just being about the funding and the bonding, but it was also the council's wishes to have a broader input from the community. And so I think we will hear from people what they think about the project in general, and maybe as well, some of the financing in general, too, when we open up the public hearing. These were some of the highlights that the tax abatement bonds had, and we'll show you a couple charts about how they're advantageous based on our quality rating. Some examples of other projects, again, these were shown to the council a couple weeks ago of where other recreational facilities have been funded in this type of manner. This was shown as the interest trends in the bond buyers index, you saw that a couple weeks ago. Again, that AAA rating, which is what the City of Eden Prairie has, affords us some of the best rates that are out there, so you see it being that lower blue line on this chart. We've talked to you a lot about the concept of, can we afford to finance this? Can we take on that debt? And what you see on the black line is the current level of debt that the city is servicing on an annual basis right now. And so we extrapolated that line out. We said with the green dots, what if we took on the debt for an aquatics expansion? And you'll see what that does, it still stays below the annual debt that we're already paying. The reason that that happens is, we have some debt that's being retired, and that's why you'll see that kind of in gradual steps as other debt comes off. You'll also see that the bond payments that would be associated with a project like this aren't equal by 1/20th. There are different in the payment expectations, there are different ranges, and it depends on how we select to pull those ranges in. And so it's not a smooth line, but this illustrates the capability of, if you took on this debt, it's not going to cause us in the next budget year to say, we need to assess more taxes in order to pay for this. It's because other debt is falling off. We're able to put that, this new debt, in place of that and still be under what our current payments are and have been. We're also going to suggest that we have money, not just from bonds, but from our capital improvement and maintenance fund, and this shows you the history of the balance of that. And so we're sitting at just over $14 million at the end of 2013 in that fund, and this is a smaller portion of what we would suggest that we would use to finance this project. So I'll show you a range here, and GMP is the guaranteed maximum price. And so you saw the worksheet where it came to that approximately 19.6. That didn't have the 1.3 in for the water slide area and the plunge pool. That takes it to approximately the 20.9. We're suggesting that out of that capital fund where I just showed you, there's about $14 million, we're suggesting that 2.5 to 3.0 would be a reasonable dollar amount to use. We know our Fox Jets Swim Club has pledged $500,000, and so that really shows you what the range to finance in bonds would be, somewhere in that $16 to $17 million range. So again, last night, we talked with the Parks and Recreation Natural Resources Commission. You'll see in front of them their approval, and I have a friend that's doing for me what I didn't do for him about a week ago. I already owed Brian one, because last week when we were opening bids, I was just the opening guy, and he was the guy reading, and so for an hour, he kept speaking and speaking and speaking, and afterwards, I said, I should have got you a bottle of water, so thank you, I owe you two at least. So this was pretty emphatic on behalf of the Parks Commission, and remember, a lot of them have been community residents for a long time and have had kids go through the cities, whether it's the athletic associations, the swim clubs, the high schools, and so they had a really good feel for what the need was. They've also been with us through the entire feasibility study and through the design, and have had great input along the way. And so their recommendation, really because there weren't any big surprises, we've kind of gone incrementally along the way, their recommendation was to move forward, and they certainly wanted to add those provisions that I told you about earlier, about the water slide plunge pool, and how they felt that that was an overall benefit to the project, that now is the time to do it, and it would be a good value for the project and a benefit to the aquatics expansion. So certainly, I can answer questions now, we can do the public hearing now, and I can come back, really, your discretion.
Let's take a few council questions now.
Absolutely.
I assume everybody has some. Does somebody want to start with a question? Otherwise, I've got one I want to ask. With this water slide setup, are we able to shut that off completely for safety reasons during times when you might not have it manned?
Exactly. You see sometimes where it can be some rope instantsions, also some, you have to be able to go up a ladder. State code, when you're actually using it and running it, you need somebody at the top, and you also need somebody at the bottom in the plunge pool when people are going up and down. There's also restrictions on height, too, somewhere in that 40-to-42-inch height to be able to go up and down the water slide.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other questions? Or not? Oh, Councilmember Nelson.
I've got a couple. One of which, are we going to hear from the bond people here about probable percentages for interest, what's, you know, sort of boundary, what's expected on the average? I would definitely like to hear that tonight. Is that planned where they're here and can do that?
Well, what I would say is that, two weeks ago, when they were here, they gave us their best trends. They would be the first to say that they, like nobody else, really knows what that rate will be next week, three weeks, a month from now. What the action tonight for the tax abatement gives authority to is to move forward to be in a position to sell those bonds at a time when it would be highly recommended to sell those bonds. And so that would be contemplated, and it would come back to you at a different meeting to be able to sell and issue the bonds.
But I guess I would like to know sort of, you know, their range of guess, is this averaging 2%, you know, from the one-year out to the 20-year? What exactly are the expectations? It looked to me like it was about 2%, but...
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, we do have Timmy Amidal from Northland Securities, who was here two weeks ago, and she can give a quick update on that.
Mayor, members of the City Council, we have done some preliminary structures, and I know the numbers are still moving around a little bit, but to give you an idea, based upon a 20-year term, and that's what the abatement would allow for, too, the current estimated, and I'll give you the true interest cost, which includes cost of issuance and over the term of the bonds, is about 3.3% presently. And as... And as mentioned, that's an estimate until you actually go out for bid and we get those bids back. And because you're planning potentially to issue in the near term, that is a reasonable estimate at this time. So 3.3% to answer your question on...
So that's averaged over the various rates that you'd pay over...
That is correct, and that's based upon the current structure as far as when the different maturities would be paid off. And the council's not making that decision this evening, but we have looked at it on a preliminary basis.
Okay.
And I think to clarify that, in some of the charts that were shown two weeks ago, you would see like in the first, maybe three to four years, you know, the interest rate would be, you know, half a percent, kind of working toward maybe a 1% rate to 2% in the five to 10-year term, and then when you get toward the 20-year term, you get 3% to 4%. So that's how you get the average over the 20 years. But you can, you saw previously that those are very low interest rates, low interest payments in the early years of the bonds.
Do you have another question, Kathy?
Yeah, there's one thing I had to question on the aquatic play area that goes in the zero entry. It looked like it took a lot of that pool space. Is there still going to be plenty of space for people, say adults, who need the zero entry? I know some seniors have said that's one thing they really want. Will there be some room for exercise classes fairly near the zero entry? I've heard both parents of young children and seniors talking about that, and I've heard some other people with, you know, relatives who are in wheelchairs or whatever, that they were interested in that at some previous public hearings. So how much is play space with lots of splashing, and how much is, you know, for the 70-year-old lady who would like to get to her exercise class?
Exactly, and those were discussions we had when, if we go to take a look at this slide here, this is where the zero-depth entry is, right here. These were just examples of where things could go. Our first reaction to that, when we worked with the play installation consultant, was we want that all in this area right here for a couple reasons. One, we see this is where people come out of the locker room, and for those that want to go through here and use this area for more of either walking through in the shallow water to get to this more warm-water lap kind of, short lap kind of a pool, we know that this needs to be an area that you can easily walk through and be free of people, you know, running and splashing and playing. So we really are showing that ultimately as being tucked in into this part of the pool.
I know there are other exercise programs where people work in warm water for aerobics, where, you know, they're running in the water and that kind of thing that needs a shower and warm pool, and that could still provide it.
You're going to see a lot of that happening right in here. A lot of the larger water aerobics or water-type exercise classes will take place in this portion of the pool. But also during an open swims session, you might see six-to-eight-to-10-year-olds, you know, using this as a nice shallow, warm-water area where they can play. We show a small basketball hoop over here. This is a small bench with a lot of extra jets to it, so it's kind of like a hot tub for families to be in in the regular pool. So this is a pretty flexible space, and depending on what time of day and who's there, it's used for quite a few different things.
That's all the questions for now.
Thank you very much. Anybody else at this moment? Okay. As we mentioned, we are going to have a public hearing. We've had, at the last council meeting, I talked about the rules for this public hearing, and I prefaced that with a litany of all of the things that we have done over the course of these last several years in getting public comment and public participation in the plans for this. And it was quite a long list, and I'm not going to go through it now, but those of us that have been on the council for a while have known that this isn't just something that came up two years ago. It's something that we've known has needed to be done for years and years and years, and finally, we seem to be struck with a good opportunity for doing it. So I won't go through that list, but we are going to use a public hearing process, as I mentioned at the last meeting, similar to what Hennepin County does for their public hearings, similar to what the Metropolitan Council does for their public hearings, which is that you get three minutes maximum to address us. The format is not a question-and-answer format. It's not an opportunity for discussion or getting your answers to miniscule, fine points that need to be addressed. If you ask questions, we will ask our staff to get back to you at some point after the meeting tomorrow or whatever with answers to your questions, but we're not going to take up this time of public testimony with question-and-answer period because it eats up too much time. It's not fair to other people that want to speak. So I had, we do have a sign-up list that we started and back, and I'll initially go off of this sign-up list and go in this order. When we get to the end of the people that have actually signed up on the list, please feel free to come up and do additional public testimony if you have a point you want to make or if you want your opinion known. So with that, three minutes per person, max, and we'll start out with James Sander. And if you'd come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is James Sander. I'm a member of the Hammergren &amp; Meyer Law Firm in Bloomington. I'm here this evening on behalf of Northland Concrete and Masonry, which is one of the bidders in the program which Mr. Lothammer has just been explaining to you. The reason I'm here this evening is I want to ask you to accept the bid of Northland Concrete and Masonry. The reason I say so is that the base bid of Northland was low by approximately $150,000 below the bid of Gresser. And if we add the, an alternate in, we're still probably approximately $100,000 lower than Gresser, which is the bid that the city is poised to accept, and I would submit that the city is poised to pay too much money for the same work. The basis on which Northland's bid was not accepted as low was an administrative detail. There was an addendum to the supplementary instructions to bidders, which at one paragraph told them you can submit separate bids for the line items of basinry and concrete. However, I would submit to you that if you look at this carefully, it is ambiguous as to whether or not a combined bid would be acceptable. It does say "may," and the form itself does permit a combined bid to be entered, and Northland did, in fact, enter a combined bid for the basinry and the concrete. And so the numbers I've given you are reflective of the combined bid of Northland. There's nothing about the combined bid that would give Northland any substantial benefit or advantage over any of the other bidders. There's nothing unfair about the bidding process. It was simply a low price for the same work. The legal precedents with respect to governing this kind of a deviation from an administrative instruction say that it's not a material defect. And Northland's bid, it's not a material defect because it does not affect the price, the quality, the quantity of the work, or the manner of the performance. In that regard, I could point the city attorney to several cases, the Foley Brothers versus Marshall case, 123 Northwest Second, 387, as one citation, which is continuing to be followed by the cases of this kind. The fundamental purpose of the bidding laws are to award the work to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The city has the discretion, and I do emphasize that the city does have the discretion, to override a harmless and inadvertent administrative requirement, and that's taken from the case law, which does not affect the substance of the bid, and this is one of those instances in which the city should exercise that discretion.
Thank you. I'm going to have to cut you off.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sander. The next person is Dan Cottrell.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before I start the clock, I just want to recognize Mr. Gettrill and Mr. Lothammer. They've been fantastic to work with. They're tremendous, and as you saw tonight, quite an impressive proposal they've put before you. So I have a brief statement I'd like to read. I may be the only one speaking in favor of a referendum tonight, so hopefully each of you have gone out to the epoolvote.com website and read some of the comments that people have made. To paraphrase the city's financial advisor two weeks ago, choosing to have a referendum is not a financial decision, nor is it a legal decision, it's a policy decision. Tonight, I asked the city council to follow previously established policy and allow residents to vote on this $20 million amenity. Support for a referendum and support for updating the swimming pool are not incompatible. Many residents which support a referendum also support providing a safe swimming facility and access to quality learn-to-swim programs. If this project was primarily funded by members and users, then there would be no need for a referendum. However, with residents being asked to pay $17 million of the $20 million construction costs and to potentially subsidize annual operating costs, residents deserve the opportunity to vote. Last March, Mr. Lothammer reviewed three options for updating the swimming facilities at the community center. They included spending $1 million to make necessary repairs, spending $10 million to expand the swimming facilities, or spending $1.5 million to build a new aquatic center. Several people asked how the city planned to pay for this project, but the questions were never answered at that meeting. Last August, the city reviewed the proposed design for the $16.5 million aquatic center. Again, several residents, including members of the community center, asked how the city planned to pay for this project, but again, these questions were not answered during that meeting. Several residents expressed concern on the City Connect website about cost to build, maintain, and operate the facility. Members were concerned the rates would increase. Others were concerned about adding to the millions of dollars of operating losses. Although the city emphasizes quadrupling of memberships and skyrocketing demand, the community center still loses near, their losses nearly doubled from 2012 to 2013 and now exceed $3.5 million. Over the past two years, the city's process has focused on writing a shopping list based on wants rather than writing a business plan based on budget. Even basic questions have not been addressed. For example, I asked how the membership rates and user fees compared to Lifetime Fitness, Boston School, Waterparks in America, and nearby community centers, and the city's response was they hadn't done this research because they did not compare themselves to these competing service providers. The estimated building cost grew from $16.5 million to $19.5 million, now could exceed $21 million. The $325,000 Hennepin County grant was rejected. Proposed bonding to be paid by taxpayers increased from $16 million to $17 million. As recently as November 2013, Mr. Lothammer estimated revenues would exceed expenses by $500,000 per year, but what he shared tonight is showing a loss or break-even over the next several years. But what happens if operating losses continue or even increase? Residents will likely be asked to pay all of these additional costs. Eden Prairie families prioritizing spending every day balancing what they want with what they can afford. Similarly, the Eden Prairie School Board is adjusting their referendum based on input from residents. The city has sought input on what members and users would like to have built, but the majority of costs will be paid by non-members and non-users. Tonight, I encourage residents to sign the petition to epoolvote.com, and further, I ask the city council to make it your policy to give Eden Prairie residents a vote. Let us have a vote, please. Thank you. Steve Nelson is next.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm Steve Nelson. I live on South Hillcrest Court. I want to go on record as being one of probably a vast majority of people here at this meeting who are in favor of the new aquatic center going in. I'm not going to stand here and give you the pros and cons of why we should. You are the people that understand this better than anyone else. If anybody's going to be making a decision on whether or not this is a good idea for our city, I think you are the people that can do it. So I am perfectly content with not having a referendum on this. As I said, I do want this pool. One of the things that I do want to say tonight is I wanted to just kind of remind everybody here that a couple years ago, we were voted the best city in the United States, and I think that's pretty great. Now, how did we do that? Well, I can tell you one thing. We did not get there by having bad parks, terrible roads, inefficient and corrupt city government. We got there by the positive things. We got there with a great school district, excellent roads, roads that are cleaned of snow in the winter, quickly, thank you, and we have a wonderful community center. I use it. I use it a lot. I think it's fantastic. I'm looking forward to the pool because I was a swimmer, and I'm looking forward to working out in this new pool. We have before us now an opportunity to improve the community center that we have, to make the city of Eden Prairie even better than it was. And so I want to encourage you, please, let's put this aquatic center up outside of our existing pool so that we have a really state-of-the-art facility for all of us to use, for us, for our kids, and for the new people that are going to be moving into Eden Prairie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Ryan Skog, and he will be followed by Tony Satterweight. I'm not sure I'm saying that right.
Hi, thanks. My name's Ryan Skog. I live on Nottingham Trail in Eden Prairie. I come before you as a resident of Eden Prairie first, but I'm also a Fox Jet parent. My kids go to Eden Prairie High School as swimmers. I belong to the community center. I congratulate the council and the city and Mr. Lothammer for a great presentation. This is years and years of work, finally coming to fruition. You've done a great job. This isn't just about competitive swimming. It's about families. It's about groups like the Special Olympics. It's swimming lessons. It's seniors, senior citizens. It's handicap accessibility. It's all sorts of things. And it's just a great thing for us here to bring this up to a state-of-the-art facility. Now, also, I want to say is we travel around the state to swim meets and stuff. We go to all sorts of aquatic places, aquatic centers and pools. We see places that have put in state-of-the-art facilities, you know, I think of Richfield and Olmsted County in Rochester. These are 40 years old now, and they're still really versatile and excellent facilities that we go to all the time, right? Richfield's pool, their middle school, it's early '70s, mid-'70s, right? We're still using that all the time because it's still versatile for us. So I just want to encourage the council to go ahead. We have an opportunity now to build a facility like this that will serve us for many, many years to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Skog. Tony, sorry, I'm sure I butchered your name.
I'll try to help you. Satterthwaite.
Okay.
But that's okay. Thank you. You did well.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. My name's Tony Satterthwaite. I live at 7109 Lanham Lane. I'm a Fox Jet parent. My children have swam on this team for 11 years. They practically learned to swim there. My oldest son actually swam at the Olympic trials, so this has been an excellent experience for me. I can tell you, bringing my children to the Eden Prairie Community Center for 10 years, watching the impact that the last upgrade you made to that center had on that facility, I'm just really excitedly looking forward to what this next upgrade is going to do. I want to commend Mr. Lothammer and the Parks and Rec Committee. I had a lot of things to say about the pool. He's already said them all, including a lot of other things I didn't think of saying. But I'd also like to commend the city council for your financial management and prudence in putting yourself in a position where this community can afford to make this investment at this time and make a significant positive impact without having to increase tax rates or increase your debt burden beyond what you're currently paying. So thank you very much for that. I'm a strong supporter of the pool, and I hope the whole program goes ahead because the design meets the needs of many different segments of the Eden Prairie community, and I want to commend you for thinking of all the different parts, not just the swimmers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sander. Bob on Hamesway, I can't read his last name. Hopefully, it's not something like Larson, and I just can't read it.
Bob Wagner.
Okay.
Hamesway. I want to understand, in the paper, that the public notice says abatement, but I've heard bonding tonight. Can someone please define the structure and what it means to my property ID?
Oh, okay. Good question.
Sure.
Mr. Gettrill.
So the...
We're not supposed to do questions.
Okay.
Let's wait. We will get back to it. I want to be, I want to be real about the instructions I gave, but we will get back to it. Thank you.
The quick answer is that it will not affect your property.
Okay.
Mark Davis, 2487 Crown Hill Road, Minnetonka. I don't live in the community. I've been the president of the Fox Jet Swim Team for the last 18 years, so I've certainly put lots of effort and time into running what we consider the best youth organization in swimming in the state of Minnesota. I stand before you and represent 1,000 Eden Prairie residents, 300 swimmers, all of which are anxious and have waited many, many years for a new aquatics facility to be built in the community. We applaud the mayor and city council for having the foresight to move forward. You're at a time where interest rates are at historic low, construction... You're at a time where interest rates are at historic low, construction costs are at historic low, and it's the time to move forward with this project. The FoxJets are committed, as you've seen and heard, to raising money to help. We're not an organization that has lots of money, but we have lots of members, and we're committed. We've already built our website. We set up our merchant account to take credit card payments, and we're going to hit the ground running as soon as you guys approve this project going forward. So I don't have anything else to say other than we're supportive, we're going to work hard, we're going to deliver on our promise to help raise funds for the program, for the aquatic center, to reduce the costs, and do our part. It's not about competitive swimming. It's about facilities that serve the entire community, from seniors to youth to families to competitive swimming. And we're so appreciative of what you're doing to move this project forward. Thank you.
You're going to take a selfie if you're testifying before the council?
Hi, I'm Isabella Hager. I live on Mayfield Drive. I'm a sophomore at Eden Prairie High School. I've been on the high school swim and dive team for two years, and I'm also on Team FoxJet, which I've been on for the last six years. With my experience on both of these teams, it is clear that the Eden Prairie Community Center is in need of updated aquatic facilities. For example, when Eden Prairie hosts high school meets, we are limited to a six-lane pool at Oak Point, which limits the number of swimmers permitted in the meets. Also, at Oak Point, there are no diving facilities, which obviously makes it difficult to host home meets. Many people think the aquatics expansion would be primarily for the swim team. This is not true. With the updates planned for the aquatics facility, like the zero-depth entry and the separate section with warmer waters, these upgrades will be beneficial to seniors, families, and people with adapted needs. This past year, there has been conflict with the water temperatures at the community center. The water temperatures are not ideal to turn in. Having two separate—having two separate pools could be a solution to this problem. I believe that this aquatic upgrade will be very beneficial to the community of Eden Prairie and will help limit these conflicts between seniors, families, and competitive swimmers. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabella. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Okay. Please give your name and address for the record.
Jim Deal on West Riverview Drive. And I just wanted to make sure everyone on the council knew that there currently is an Aquajets facility that exists, and it's got a four-lane warm-water training pool, a five-lane competition training pool, and an eight-lan—eight-lane competition pool with starting blocks. So it's not like there isn't already some sort of competition-level swimming pool in this area. And then also, thank you, Kathy, for asking about the interest rates. So at a 3.3% rate, that's going to add about $6.5 million to the overall cost of the project over the 20-year period. So now, we're going from the initial $16 million project to somewhere on the order of $27 million over 20 years. And that's kind of a lot of money without a referendum. So I would like to encourage the council to make a motion for a referendum and then have a recorded vote so we, as a representative democracy, can know how each of you think on the idea of a referendum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Boston. I'm the head coach of the Eden Prairie Girls and Boys Swim Team. First of all, I'd like to speak to the Aquajet issue. Aquajets is a privately-owned facility. That would not be anything that we could rent or FoxJets could rent. They also do not have any seating, so they could never host a meet at that facility. I just want to thank you for looking at this project seriously, and I just want to say the high school fully supports this, and we hope that you vote to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anybody else? Last call. Okay. I see a lot of faces out there that have testified before, so we appreciate seeing you again. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, so the first thing that we're going to vote on is the resolution approving property tax abatement related to the upgrades for the pool. This might be a good time to address issues of tax abatement and what it means for property ID numbers and so forth.
Certainly, Mayor and Council. I'll do a quick synopsis, and I know I've got backup assistance. So the use of the tax abatement bonds and the presentations that you've had in the past is the idea that we can grant property tax abatement to certain parcels in the city that would then be used to construct public facilities or infrastructure to renew blighted areas or provide service to residents. So the mechanism, and you saw that in the packet with the resolution, is we identified a specific number of parcels in the city that were actually contiguous to the community center. So the idea would be to take parcels that were close to the community center that we identified, that the amount of the taxes that would be abated could add up to cover the debt service that we needed. And as you recall from two weeks ago, that's the theoretical basis for the abatement. In reality, we will treat this, as you heard in Mr. Lotthammer's presentation, this will be treated as much of our other debt. It will be combined with our other debt. We will levy across the city. It will not be applied to specific parcels. And as you saw that, our total debt levy would not increase, but we would take on that additional debt. The abatement is the mechanism we need to accomplish that. And you may be familiar with lease revenue bonds, the same concept of revenue related to a facility to pay back the bonds, but many times, those are also levied across the city as well. So the gentleman who may have had that tax ID number that was published in the notice or in the packet would not be directly affected by this project. It goes to what we said earlier, we would levy our debt across our entire populace.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on this issue? Okay. Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt the resolution approving property tax abatement related to upgrades to the Eden Prairie Aquatics Center.
Is there a second?
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. I have a slight adjustment to make. So I do want to say that if you are considering the full package, we might want to make a slight revision to the resolution. And you can choose not to do this later, but it provides you a buffer. If you look at the resolution itself on 4.03, it says that the—that you will not exceed $17 million in a not-to-exceed amount. And that was kind of that estimate between the 16 and the 17.5, I think it is, in debt. So I think with this resolution, to protect ourselves from what we may do, that I would ask that you change that number from 17 to 17.5 million when considering this resolution. And then if you don't act on those alternates, that's okay because that's the maximum.
I'm not following where you're pulling those numbers from.
Okay, so if you look at the resolutions, it'll be page 206 in the packet.
Oh, I'm looking at the annotated agenda.
Yep. I'm sorry. Yep, the resolution for tax abatement upgrades on page 206, the second page of the resolution 4.03, says the abatements would not exceed the 17 million. And we would ask that that would be 17.5 million.
Okay, so should we act on C first?
Oh, okay. All right. The finance manager wants to be very, very conservative. $18 million.
Okay.
To put 18 in there. That would be the maximum we could levy. So even if it slightly goes above the 17, there's room in there, and that includes cost of issuance.
Wouldn't it be—wouldn't it make more sense to talk about the entire project first before we do this?
The point I was making is that it can be anything less than that number.
Oh, okay.
It can be 16, it can be 17, 18, but this gives you that protection now, Mayor. It doesn't hold you to anything, doesn't tip your hat.
Okay. All right. Were you making a motion?
I made the motion. So should I just keep the motion, but—
amend to 18 million.
amend to 18 million.
If we had a motion to amend the motion to raise the amount to 18, let's do this formally.
I amend—
No, I need someone else to make a motion to amend the amount to 18 million.
I'll make a motion to amend the amount to 18.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We did not have a second on the original motion, though.
I thought we did.
I don't think so.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Stop us first.
I'm sorry. I thought I heard a second on the original motion.
No, you guys stopped us, so.
All right. So then, we don't need that motion. I'm sorry.
So are we back to my motion?
We're just where you thought you were before.
But with 18.
I amend to 18 million, maximum.
All right.
Okay.
So my motion plus amending to 18 million maximum.
Second.
Any discussion at this point? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there anything further you want to say on item C, Mr. Getchel, which is the actual assassination of contracts?
Mayor, I do not.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Lotthammer or Mr. Getchel or Mr. Russo on this? I would—I'd like a little clarification of the bid situation because obviously, I'd like to save $150,000, if I could save $150,000 here. But we also put out a bid with—or asked for bids, and we had instructions, and we want to be fair to all people that participated in that process. So could you address that, Mr. Russo?
Yes, I will. I'm mayor and members of the council. Hopefully, I'll do a better job than I did under motion. I respectfully disagree with council, and I understand his position.
Not us.
This council. I respectfully disagree with him. We had a good conversation this afternoon. I understand his position. It's my opinion, and I've advised the city, that this bid cannot be accepted. The supplementary instructions clearly state bidders must submit separate bids for each category identified. Combined bids may not be considered if separate bids for each category have not been submitted by that bidder. Separate bids were not submitted by Northland on those two items. A combined bid was. It's my opinion that separate bids were required to be submitted, and that it does give a material advantage to a bidder who does that, whether intentionally or unintentionally. Mr. Sander identified correctly for us that one of the items that's material is price, and I see that this goes directly to price. It is the price that we're talking about. And a bidder has a material advantage if the bidder only bidded on the combined and avoided the option that perhaps the bidder would be awarded only one, but not both of those items. And that's one of the advantages that a bidder would have by not having bid on both. There's a synergy, there's efficiencies, there's better pricing that we would expect from a combined bid, as well as more profit for a contractor in being able to do both. So it's in the contractor's interest to get both. By bidding on both of them separately, you run the risk of only getting one and not making as much profit. That's the material advantage, and the law is very clear that in those situations that go to price, we cannot accept a bid that does not conform with that requirement. As I discussed it with staff, I thought the only two options were to award it, as has been recommended, or reject the bid and reject all bids and rebid.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
I assume this is the time to bring up whether we're doing the water slide and such. And also, on Mr. Lotthammer's presentation, they talked about doing $2.5 to $3 million of capital improvement bonds, or not capital, are capital improvement funds. And is this where we talk about that as well?
Correct.
So my first question is, is why only $2.5 to $3, not—why not maybe going to 4? What implications would that have for the city to bumping that up a little bit?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, in the staff's estimation, when you saw the graph of the capital improvement fund balance, we've had some very positive years in terms of results, in terms of revenue and expenditures throughout the city for a variety of different reasons. And as you know, it's your policy to then put that money, one-time money, one-time dollars toward one-time items. And we then transfer that money into our capital improvement fund. And it's our conservative estimate that we could take $2.5 to $3 million of cash, basically, out of that fund to put toward this project and still feel that we could come back when we update our next tenure CIP this summer and be in a very positive place to fund 20 years citywide of all of our capital improvements and do it within budget. I would say that we could go possibly between $3 and $4 million, but then I think when you're starting to get over $3 to $4 million, there might be—we might just want to take a closer look at our 20-year CIP. But as you saw with that balance that we have and the positive results we have, we do feel very confident with the $2.5 to $3 million number. And I think $3.5 to 4, or to 4, is a possibility, but we'd like to do a little bit more analysis on that for you if necessary. And we can come back at a later date to maybe drill down into those details of how much debt and how much cash. But I know we feel really good about the $2.5 to 3, and we could consider something higher if you want us to look into that. But we want to—we want to keep on that trajectory of not needing to increase our tax levy for capital improvements or debt and be able to fund all the other projects at Eden Prairie that are coming down the line.
Well, I would want us to do at least 3. And then there's the water slide, which is a definite amount of money, and I can see why the Parks and Rec Commission thought this would be a very good thing to do. You know, I would almost rather go to 3.5 if we're going to do another expensive one-time situation. And I understand we're still bonding for 20 years. This is going to last 30 to 40 years. It's a pretty good investment, you know, that's paid for halfway through the use of it. But obviously, I know the slide doesn't cost $1.3 million, but to put it in there costs that much. And I'm still torn on this water slide. I'd love to hear what the rest of you have to say, but I'd almost want to consider bumping that up a little bit for this other one-time expense.
Thank you. And that wouldn't be something we have to decide tonight, I assume.
It would not, Mayor. And again, I—you know, I think when you're talking, you know, up to an additional half a million dollars, I think we would—we could have a comfort level with that and let you know tonight that I—that the feeling is that we could probably go forward with that, but we'd like to fine-tune those numbers a little bit based on what you, as a council, would like to do.
Councilmember Wixter.
Yeah, I—I actually really agree with doing the slide, the diving board, the climbing wall, and of course, the lights. And the reason I do is that I think that it—that addresses a wide range of ages of folks that would be using that particular part of the pool, of the aquatic center. So the climbing wall would appeal to teenagers, diving board too, the slide, a multiple range. But I was thinking it would be kind of like putting a pool in your backyard and not having, you know, all the ancillary things to play with. So I actually support that, and I think that the costs of them were reasonable enough for this time for us to do it. But I do like your idea, Kathy, about—because I really would like to keep it at a zero-tax levy. I think we're all in agreement on that. So however we can do that, and capital improvements might be one of the ways that we can, I sure would like to be able to do that and get this done right.
Councilmember Aho.
I think—I think adding some of the amenities, you know, what I've tried to look at is if you look at this from, you know, more of a business perspective and you say, what if you do this project without doing some of these amenities? What does that do to the long-term membership of the—of the project? And I think if you do some of these amenities, it really is going to bring in other users, it's going to bring in more— it's going to bring in more families. I think we're going to see our memberships increase more. And I think for the small additional costs to do some of these, and the water slide isn't small and insignificant, but I do think it'll bring in more people. I think it'll, it'll overall, over the life of the project, it'll add to the value of the project in such a way that it'll be a positive, a positive cash flow from that. So I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I had a bit of a struggle with this over the weekend, because I really didn't want to go up to a higher dollar figure. But what it ultimately comes down to for me is I think about who is living in Eden Prairie and why did we move here? We know from city surveys that we've done, year after year, that people say they moved here because it's a great family place, it has great facilities, it has great parks, it has great schools. This is a city built on families. And we came here, and a lot of us have been invested in three, four, and five-bedroom houses with the hope that this would continue to be a great family community. So the value that something like this brings as an amenity to our community, that will continue to make this community attractive to families, I think that's just huge. And I think leaving out this piece would ultimately not be a very wise decision. We know from our surveys that nobody said that they came here because we were a low-tax city, even though when we look at comparable MLC cities, we are like in the third, one of the three lowest in terms of tax rates. But people didn't choose this community because of the low tax level, they chose it because of the amenities that we offer to them and their families. So I think it's important when we have this opportunity to reinvest in our community, add an amenity without increasing taxes, it's a no-brainer, I think. So.
When do you want to do comments?
Yeah, why don't we start doing comments? And why, councilmember Case wrote up some comments that he wants me to read, but why don't you all do yours first, and then, and then I'll read his comments? Do you want to go ahead?
Okay, we'll go down the road. Okay. So first of all, I'd just like to thank everyone for taking the time to come out tonight for this important meeting, and also those who have contacted us previously. We've had many people contact us via email, phone, you know, just talking to people at different community events. There's been a lot of input on this. Really, tonight's meeting, as we've heard, is really the culmination of more than two years of hard work by city staff, consultants, residents, and others. And we've really evaluated all the possible options to remedy the current situation, and we've arrived at this proposal that we have before us tonight. And I really want to commend everyone who has been involved in this prudent process. And we've had many, as we've mentioned, we've had many public meetings, and we've worked really hard to obtain good cost data, because we've done projects in the past where I think we didn't maybe necessarily do all the due diligence to get good cost data. This time, I think we've really done a good process where we've, we've gathered all the details, we've, we've, you know, spent some money to get good cost numbers, but we really understand what the cost numbers are. And so we're making a decision based on having good data, and I think that is important. Really doing nothing, as we've heard, is no longer an option. I think closing the existing pool for a year to deepen it to code is also not an option. As we've heard tonight, one single pool can't serve both competitive swimmers and other user groups because of the different depths and temperatures required for each. And we, when we really look at the situation, we say, this current pool is built back in the eighties, we are a small town of about sixteen thousand people, so that pool was built when we had sixteen thousand residents. Now we're over four times that, almost sixty-three thousand residents. So our needs are vastly different between that time and now. And I really think that one single body of water can no longer meet our needs, and I think it's time to do something. I've heard from many people, and I've experienced it myself, that when we host swim meets for the Eden Prairie High School, and that being their pool, when we can't hold meets there, it's really kind of an embarrassment. When you think of Eden Prairie as being a premier city to live in, and we host meets at Oak Point Pool where there's no place to watch, we can't hold diving in the same facility, it's, it's really kind of an embarrassment for our city, I believe. And I think that, you know, we've seen all the, all the improvements to all the other sports facilities. I mean, we have great hockey, we have great baseball, we have soccer, all the different sports. We've, we've taken care of those sports, and swimming has really lagged behind. And when we look at the number of swimmers in, in the programs, there are more swimmers than just about any other sport at the high school level, and, and just in general. And I think it's really a time that we, we take that seriously. We've received emails, all of us received emails from Katie Bootsma, who made it to the Olympics as a swimmer. And I think, you know, the number of people that we're putting through our programs are a high number and a very high quality, high caliber. We've got a lot of good, good swimmers, and it's really time to start serving them with something that's going to meet their needs, as well as all the other users that we've heard about. So the other thing I'd like to just say about this is that this really isn't a conservative versus liberal issue, or a Republican versus Democrat issue, this is really a community issue. It's, it's not about the right to hold referendums, this is about our thirty-plus-year-old pool and what we need to do for our high school and our entire community now that will serve us for the next thirty years. And you, as people, elect us to represent you and to make the decisions. We don't come to you with referendums for every time we want to do a decision on updating infrastructure. And this is something that's an investment, yeah, it's a hard investment, it's a, something that is infrastructure, it's going to be there for thirty to fifty years. It's not something that's just a project that's going to go away, this is something that is going to be there for a long time to come, and I think it's really a time that we do that. So thank you to all those of you who have been part of the process, thank you for all those who have commented and contacted us, we appreciate your input, and I am fully supporting this project.
Councilmember Wixter?
Yes, well, please forgive me, because I have some similar kinds of things to say. We have independent thoughts, and I didn't have a conversation with Brad, but clearly we are on the same page in a number of ways. So I would also like to thank the many, many residents who've contacted me by email, phone, and personally in the community, letting me know about their perspectives on this aquatic center. And each person's voice, as divergent as some of them have been, are of value to me and for everyone on the council. For thirty years, the Eden Prairie Community Pool has been a highly-used facility, and it has served our growing community. But for several years, it has become apparent that this facility has outlived its ability to serve our, our current residents' needs. And the community really has needed an improved pool area for a long time. So I wanted to let you know that the process the city council used was one of, it was a very deliberative, a very methodical and prudent approach in looking at options for what we would, for what we could possibly do for this aquatic center. So more than a year and a half, the city council decided to approach the question of what to do with a failing pool, one that was out of compliance and poorly functioning. And we thought about the question, kind of the dream, what would a public improvement look like? And so we decided to take an approach where we would look at options, and we had many, many questions. But our goal was always to include as many residents as possible in our approach. We wanted to figure out how to better serve the entire community of recreational aquatic users. And so we did decide to conduct a feasibility study to review these options. The process we followed as a governing body, as I mentioned, was really incremental and comprehensive. We reviewed, we assessed, we recalibrated all along the way, making changes suggested by staff, parks, commission, user groups, and of course, residents. So we have looked for efficiencies, we've looked for funding methods. There was a time that the user groups came forward and offered to support a facility with financial contributions. We, clearly, the staff has looked at other funding sources, for example, the capital improvements fund that we've talked about tonight. So as we reviewed the plans and funding options, certain attributes came forward that made this so obviously a great project. One is that it's high-quality and highly-functioning facility to serve our entire community, from toddlers to seniors. The multiple features of the aquatic center will serve a breadth of ages and really better fit our current demographics. As you can tell, all of us on this council are very excited that we will be able to provide a zero-tax impact for the total aquatic project. We also know that we've had a trial run with the expansion of our current community center and have seen a response that was beyond our expectations, and I believe we will have the same at the aquatic center. We also looked at abatement bonds as a good option with the lowest interest rate for the city, and of course, the city being good stewards, we have a triple-A bond rating, which is helpful to that. We continue to provide investments into high quality of life that our residents want. And then also, one of the other attributes is that it strengthens our ability to retain our great business community, as well as attract new businesses with these added public improvements. So this is an investment that will provide a community-wide return for many years to come. I'm excited to support the project and believe it is the right project for the right time to serve the breadth of our population, as well as fit our fiscal expectations of zero tax impact.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes. And I think I'm going to shorten mine a little bit, as I don't want to totally repeat what's just going on. But I've made a conscious issue over the last twelve months to talk to various kinds of groups around town, trying to make up my own mind exactly how big a pool we needed, and what kind of people we were and weren't serving. And the first thing that became very clear to me was that we certainly were not serving families with young children. The water was too cold, they didn't feel like we did anything to get young children before six, seven into swimming. And which, we have a lot of lakes around town, and a lot of parents felt it was very important to get their young children into at least a basic swimming mode for safety. I talked to seniors groups, and they said, well, the pool was too cold, they would like to do more exercise, their doctor wanted them to do more exercise, and the pool just didn't have what they needed. And they would really like a pool that did. We've certainly heard from the swimming teams and the Fox Jets that this isn't providing them what they need for competition. I've also heard from just regular adults that say, swimming is a main part of my exercise regime, and it's really hard to get lap pool time. I can't do it when I want to, or even sometimes if I want to, and I really would like a place to do that, that I'm not competing with the swim team or with ten-year-olds. And so as I've listened, it, we really aren't giving anybody what they needed for swimming in our current pool. So to me, that says we have to change. Am I doing that? And so it did seem like it was time for a community investment into this. We've talked about healthy community, swimming is a lifetime sport, it's both exercise and sport, and it's fun for young kids, and it's certainly a safety method for getting young kids into the water. We do have a very good tax rating where we can do as low-interest bonds as it's possible, and this tax abatement bond seemed to be the way to go. Every year you put it off, it's another year before you have it out, and the costs for inflation go up. So I believe it is time to make this investment. I'm really happy that we can pay for it over twenty years without raising taxes and have this for thirty, forty years. It's certainly the kind of investment I like to see the city making. And, you know, it makes financial sense, and I think it makes sense for every group in our community. Not everyone will choose to use it. Some people wouldn't dream of going near water because they're quite sure they would drown. But most people do like to add lifetime sports into their exercise regime. And so this is, I think, the way we need to go about to do it.
Okay, thank you.
I want to thank everybody for their input, too, whether you were on the planning commission or you participated in some of our focus groups about what this pool could possibly be, whether you came to a public hearing or a town hall meeting or just sent us an email. Thank you so much for your input, because I really truly think that by hearing from a wide variety of users, we've really come up with a great product, and this is going to be fabulous for our community. I know that I'm kind of preaching to the choir here, because I've, I've heard the response to the positive comments that councilmembers have made about the pool. So I could, I could say some of the same things you've said, but I would like to sort of address some of the issues that have come up and sort of the criticisms that we've had. First of all, I'd like to say that it is not unusual for cities to issue debt without referendums. It's not unusual for cities to raise taxes without referendums. We've done it before, we have fifty-four million dollars' worth of debt right now, and we get triple-A bond ratings because we are a low-debt city, we're a well-managed city, we have a strong base of businesses and citizens in our communities, so we get great rates. So this is not a high level of debt, and we have issued debt for bridges, for roads, for things that the fire department and the police department needs. We don't go out for a referendum every time we do that, that's what representative government is about. Most recently, two cities, Woodbury and Edina, were in the paper with debt that they are issuing for major park facilities. Edina had, doing a sports dome, the cost went up another two million, they didn't do a referendum, a total project cost of twelve and a half million. Woodbury did improvements to their sports center for about twenty million. Both of these cities, I contacted their mayors directly and asked, were you asked for a referendum? Mayor Huffland from Edina said, nobody ever asked for a referendum, they were just badgering at us to get it done as soon as possible. Mary Giuliani Stevens said that they, from Woodbury, said that they had one or two residents that maybe asked for a referendum, but in general, nobody was pushing for a referendum. Some people will say, but this is, this is fluff stuff, this isn't, this isn't something that is needed in a city, and something like this, you should have a referendum. Well, I don't agree with that. There are four core areas that cities are responsible for. One is public works, one is public safety, one is planning, and one is park and rec. You could, you could definitely argue, if we don't, if we don't go out for a referendum on building a bridge, why should we go out for a referendum on community center improvement, which is also part of our realm of, not authority, I don't want to say authority, but part of our range of activities? I don't think that by doing this pool that we are overreaching what the city should be doing. Certainly, other cities have had bigger, better pools for a long time, this is way overdue. I know when I was raising my kids in the eighties, Tascas already had water slide pools. When I was growing up in the sixties in New Hope, they had community outdoor pools. I don't think we've overextended the reach of park and rec. We, we, we aren't doing everything a city could possibly do. We don't have a performing arts center, we don't have a municipal golf course, we don't have an outdoor pool that's open two and a half years out of the, or two and a half months out of the entire year. You know, we're, we're being prudent, we're being efficient, we're trying to do the max that we can do for our citizens with the, the least amount of money. This pool is going to be here for a long time. The comment has come up that implies that for some reason, swimmers should have to cover all of their costs, whereas we know, and Mr. Lothammer brought it up today, the users of our ball fields aren't covering the costs. I mean, that's just not the model. We, we sometimes strive as a city to be more businesslike, but we're not a business. There's a difference between public service and running a business. We don't necessarily expect everything to, to cover costs. If you think about something like bridge improvements on Shady Oak Road, I'll probably go over that bridge maybe once a year, but I'm helping to pay for that bridge. I mean, I don't know why this pool should be any different. This is a really old pool, it no longer serves the need of our users, we need to improve it for safety reasons, for functional reasons, the temperatures aren't right, there's not enough seating, the facilities aren't adequate. This pool plan does an outstanding job of providing for a broad range of users, and it's going to position us, us well for the future. I want to thank Fox Jets for guarantee, not guaranteeing, but being willing to do a fundraiser and try to raise funds for this pool, and I again want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I'm really excited about this project, I think it's a fabulous project, and I want to thank all of you for your participation, so I'm very much in favor of this. This project has been something that's been close to our hearts for a lot of years, for those of us that have been on the council in the nineties, we've been hearing about it since then. And we're really happy to be able to finally do something about this. And we're really happy to be able to finally do something about this pool. And Councilmember Case, who could not be here because of work, had written some comments because he wanted some of his thoughts brought out on the subject, even though he's not able to vote for this issue tonight. So I will read, he asked me to read these. "I regret not being able to be with all of you this evening. I'm in training in Toronto for the week. I very much wanted the opportunity to vote for this community center aquatics upgrade and to fund the project by using, utilizing declining debt in a way that will not raise taxes. I have full confidence in my colleagues' knowledge, wisdom, and ability to articulate the perspectives, but I did want to take this opportunity to share my thoughts as well. I've asked the mayor to read my comments into the public record. Over the years, Eden Prairie has clearly done a lot of things right. It didn't just happen by accident, and it didn't come free. In some incidences, residents voted to increase their taxes to pay for amenities that they could enjoy at the time and for which we, to this day, reap much of the benefit. But for other amenities, if not for most, from a state-of-the-art water treatment facility to the best police and fire department in the Twin Cities, city councils have made, city councils have made the difficult choices, built out a quality city, and taxed its residents, remembering that every council member is a resident as well, to fund the choices that we have created in the city we love. Currently, the Eden Prairie City Council is weighing the pros and cons of having our city invest about $20 million, based on bid openings and alternates, for an aquatics upgrade at our aging community center. Exactly like any time we make a decision that involves spending taxpayer dollars, we take this issue very seriously. Elected officials are often maligned for not standing up to be accountable for the tough choices, for not exhibiting courage to make difficult decisions that are often not supported by everyone. Curiously, now, some in our community are upset for the very reason that this council clearly has the courage and is willing to be held accountable for a tough choice and to make a difficult decision. The genius of our American political system is that one person, one vote means a vote to elect representatives who study issues and judiciously make decisions for the good of everyone. We have the technology today in America to have everyone vote on everything and do away with representative government. However, can you imagine people coming home from work each evening, exhausted, overworked, and underpaid, and having to cast a vote to build a new nuclear submarine, or buy land to build a park in a neighboring community? In reality, little would pass, and life as we know it would devolve into random chaos. There's a reason that our political system has survived as long as it has, and that's because representative government works. In fact, one could argue that most of the problems with our governmental systems today stem from attempts to circumvent the representative process. We've got a great group of people on the Eden Prairie City Council. My colleagues are smart, respectful, experienced, and incredibly connected to this community. With the combined nearly 65 years of council representative experience, making difficult decisions, meeting after meeting, month after month, history is on our side affirming the path we've chosen. Eden Prairie is the envy of the region. Everything works here. The streets are plowed on time, even in the worst of winters. We worry about and pay attention to our lakes, streams, and rivers. We're safe here, we have amazing parks and trails, our water is chlorinated, chlorinated, and softened, and our community heritage, arts, and culture are recognized and celebrated. Upgrading our community center is the right thing to do, and now is the right time. Funding it by replacing declining debt and without raising taxes is more than appropriate. It's the model and process used by cities across the nation. I'm not saying this is a no-brainer. On the contrary, after thoughtful and careful deliberation, I believe it is absolutely the best, most logical, and reasonable course of action for our community to take as we continue our transition from middle-aged to mature community. We must continue to reinvest in our infrastructure. Our future depends upon it, our home values depend on it, our present and future residents depend on it. Thank you for allowing me, this is Ron Case, time to weigh in on this very important issue coming before the council this evening." So, that should be entered into the record. Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to award the base bids and alternates to be reviewed and determined at the council meeting, which we have reviewed, as described in Attachment 1, bid descriptions and prices.
Second.
Mr. Getcho?
Uh, Mayor and Council, so I would, I would say if you look at page 219 of your packet, there are 11 alternates, and the two that are not recommended to be followed through on are five and six. Mr. Lothammer can correct me, not to go ahead with the waterproofing, and not to go ahead with the aluminum duckwork. So I would assume your motion then would be to include those alternates with the exception of those two.
Yes, that's correct.
Second.
Okay, is this, Mr. Getcho, is this motion one or motion two?
This, uh, Mayor, this is motion one. You'll need to make a separate motion then for motion two afterwards.
Okay, all right. Any questions on the first motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Is there a motion on, yes, Mr.? Okay.
It's a motion to assign the contracts.
Okay. Does somebody want to make that motion?
Sure. I move to assign contracts for the awarded bids to RJM Construction and enter into a guaranteed maximum price with RJM Construction as defined by the current agreement with RJM Construction and as illustrated in Attachment 1, bid description and prices in Attachment 2, assignment of contracts.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, and we still have things on the agenda. You're welcome to get up and leave whenever you like. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion for approval of payment of claims?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wixter?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Chair Lukens?
Aye. Thank you. Report of the Community Development Director regarding the Nine Mile Creek Water Resource Center construction update.
Your Honor, councilmembers, the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District has applied for building permits for the Water Resource Center at Gerard Drive and Topview Road. And city staff are in the process right now of reviewing those plans. There are a number of changes that we believe are administratively approvable and result in a better plan for the property, and we would just like to give you an update about that tonight. The building addition has been eliminated, there were actually two small additions, those have been eliminated. Rather, they are going to utilize the existing attached garage space and convert that into meeting space, so the building will actually be smaller than originally approved. There's also a slight relocation of the proposed parking towards the east side of the site. The driveway also meanders a little bit more to the east. This is to do less grading and preserve more trees, so there will actually be a reduction in the tree loss. This also results in relocating some of the infiltration basins. They're also proposing to add mowed trails to the property, and the purpose of that is to help designate where people would be on the property and prevent them from just kind of going everywhere and creating damage to the vegetation. They would also like to do a buckthorn and other invasive species removal plan. We haven't seen the details on that yet, but we will be reviewing that as well. And Kevin Begalki from the Watershed District is here tonight to either provide a presentation, if you're interested in that, or just answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Mr. Begalki, did you come, wanted to do a presentation?
I certainly can if you want, for questions.
Counsel?
Just questions.
Okay. Just questions? Okay, we'll just do questions. Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
I've, I've got a fast one, if you want a question.
Sure.
When are you anticipating that this will be open?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, we're hoping that we will be moving into the facility in probably early November. We're hoping to break ground here very shortly.
No concerns?
No, no questions right now.
All right, seems pretty straightforward. Thank you for coming out tonight. And there's no action required here? Thank you. Okay. Anything else to come before the council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned.